Good evening to you all and welcome to the Monday, December 10th, 2018 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are with us this evening. If you would please be so kind, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, do you call roll, please?
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse is traveling on business. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, and welcome again to all of you. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda as amended December 10th, update the section on appointments.
All right, and do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. I believe we do not have any proclamations or special presentations tonight, is that correct?
We don't.
All right. Any oaths of office to administer?
No, sir.
All right.
Oh, do we? Ah, we do. I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. You do? Yes.
All right, come on down.
I've got you for Housing Commission.
Yeah, thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, great, okay.
So, if you'd after me, I state your name.
Hi, Pete Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Housing Commission.
As a member of the Housing Commission.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And I just need to. And I will, I'll fill this out and give this to you, send it to you, and these are your, I think it's not a term and then.
Yes.
And these terms that are in your.
Absolutely, why don't you come forward and we'll congratulate you and thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. There you go, one shirt around, get a picture too, how about that? All right.
Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
All right, we are on to receipt of public comments. Madam Clerk, will you summarize the written comments we've received, if any?
Yes, I have one comment from Justin Kirby from 455 South Maple Avenue. He wrote with budget and operational suggestions for the fire department.
All right, that's it?
Yeah.
Sounds good, so we are going to move on to receipt of public comments. If you would like to speak tonight, you're certainly most welcome. We would ask that you fill out a speaker slip, which are in the back of the room. And when you get to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes, if you'd be so kind. At the present, I have two speakers. You're welcome to speak either now or when the item you're interested in is called, so that's up to you. Let me go ahead and read the first speaker, it's Amy Hirstad. Welcome.
I'm a little nervous, just not going to. So, I emailed everybody here. Delegate Simon put in an outstanding bill that I'm really excited about, and what it basically does is because we have the Dillon Rule in our state, as you all know, we don't have a lot of control on certain things, and public financing of elections is one of those things, or public financing of our campaigns. And so, we're trying to figure out ways that we can reduce the influence of big money in our campaign system. And so, one of the things is last year, this last General Assembly session, he put in a great bill called the Democracy Vouchers, and that was a big lofty bill that would have done some great stuff, but we have to kind of roll it back a little bit and think smaller and locally, and how we can show Virginians what public financing can do for elections. And so, this allows the local communities to participate and to pilot campaign financing. And it would really, what really what it would help is a lot of women and people of color to participate, and neighbors would get to know the issues better, more candidates would get to participate. And what's great about his bill is that it's non-constitutional officers, so it doesn't, it will just be local, local elections. And I, I don't know, Marcus, do you want to come up? I need a little help with this, and he's a great delegate, so.
All right, welcome to our delegate, Marcus Simon, we thank you for the great work that you do for Falls Church.
I was a little more nervous than I thought. Sorry. So, yeah, so last year, I put in a bill statewide that would have created what we call the Virginia Democracy Voucher Program. And it's modeled on something that happened in Seattle, Washington, where in Seattle, they set up a, they added, I think, a penny or two to their real estate tax to be devoted to this Democracy Voucher Program. And everybody in the city of Seattle was sent four $25 vouchers, which they could use to contribute to candidates of their choice. You could put all four of your vouchers together and bullet it for, you know, the mayor's race, or you could, you know, spread it out between Connolly and Tarter and Snyder and Hardy, and anyway, there's too many of you to fully get, you get the idea. And so, you know, I put in a bill to do that essentially for the, all the members of the General Assembly. The problem is we hadn't identified yet a funding source, and there was some concern that if we sent five million registered voters, you know, a hundred dollars' worth of vouchers, that we have a pretty big potential liability there, although the program had some regulators on it, you wouldn't have nearly spent nearly that much. At any rate, as Amy said, sort of a big and ambitious idea, we decided to scale it down. In fact, in Washington State, they don't do it statewide, they just do it in Seattle. So, the bill that I'll introduce a little bit later in the session would do nothing more than just give you guys the authority to do whatever you want to do as far as a public finance of election system would be, if you guys decided you wanted to. So, that's all I do is just basically say, here's permission, because, you know, we're, as Amy says, sort of a Mother May I state in Virginia, so we're going to say, if the city of Falls Church or any locality in Virginia wants to adopt a program where they publicly finance their local elections, they can do that. The reason we exempt constitutional officers is the treasurer probably needs to administer the program, and we wouldn't want to create a, something like we had in Florida where the treasurer's administering a program and giving herself all the vouchers, or putting in rules that would prevent other people from running. So, we don't create, you know, create even the appearance of any kind of conflict there. So, if you guys decided you wanted to create a special fund and then people could do it. And the other thing that I think what Amy was trying to get at is, what they found in Seattle is, they compared before and after that sort of the profile of a typical donor to a campaign, and the profile of a typical donor, when you have this public financing system, gets a lot younger, gets a lot more diverse, it allows people that don't have a great deal of means to participate in the process. And what happened is you've got candidates chasing votes, you know, just like you do here, you guys, all I know, knock doors and try and get to almost every door in the city. And if you find somebody who's a big supporter of yours, not only can you say, well, you vote for me, but you say, would you use your voucher for my campaign? It gives you something else to ask for, and really does give you an incentive to target regular folks as opposed to just going after the donor class for your, to fund your campaigns. So, that's the idea. Again, it would be purely permissive, wouldn't mandate you do anything, and so hopefully you all, you know, when you adopt your legislative package in a couple of weeks, might consider putting in some support to, you always complain about the stuff you can't do, right? So, maybe you can support getting more authority to do something else.
And I just want to add, Matt, he, his bill models a lot after what Maryland has done, and so Maryland right now is like little wildfires happening with local financing of their elections. And so, just recently, I want to say it was, there's Montgomery County, I think, and Baltimore, I think, as well, there's a bunch of them, Prince Georges. So, even looking at Maryland, they're also, I mean, a lot of these communities just next door are having public financing of elections. And Seattle, actually, in their city council meet, their city council ran, 12 of the 14 candidates all used public financing for their elections, so people like it. That's it.
All right, well, thank you very much, we thank you for your great work.
Do you want my, my address still? I didn't put my address. Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, sure, of course.
For Delegate Simon. So, as I understand it, this is yet again, the state legislature saying to the local government, you can do something, but you can pay for it? Is this, this is not being funded at the state level, is that right?
This is right, this is, this is, but it's not mandatory, it's simply permission to do this if you want to.
Right, so what I understand is yet again, it's the state saying, the legislature saying, and a public policy, well, this is a great idea, but you, the localities, who also have to pay for teachers and firefighters and police officers, get to do this as well. Is that right?
No. No, I think what you're suggesting, Mr. Snyder, is that this is another sort of unfunded mandate, but when it's.
No, I heard you, it's a great idea, but you and the localities can pay for it, we're not going to do it at the state level, is that right? This is, this is, let me just clarify this, this is not state funding, is that right?
This is correct, there's no state funding attached to this.
Purely, it would be funded purely at the local.
If you guys were to decide to do it, you'd have to figure out how to pay for it, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, well, listen, thanks again for your, your great work on behalf of our community, and we'd certainly like to stay posted on how this bill goes in the state legislature. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is Kate Morrison, welcome.
Great, hello again, and I'm here to speak tonight for the first reading of the weapons ordinance later in the agenda. My name is Kate Morrison, and I'm a resident of Falls Church City at 122 West Cameron Road, a mom to an eight-year-old and a two-year-old, and a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. As you can see tonight, we're everywhere, we're resilient, and we're not going to be sitting down until we can do everything we need to do to make our community safe, and we want to thank you for everything you've done with the drafting and multiple meetings leading up to this draft ordinance. We agree that it should be unlawful for any person to transport, possess, or carry a loaded shotgun or loaded rifle in a vehicle or in any public street in the city. We also know there's reduced gun violence in places where weapons are locked and unloaded. We encourage this section to be amended to include that loaded shotguns and rifles should be locked and safely secured as an additional measure, if that's possible at this point in the process. We're also pleased to see the council's commitment to destroy unclaimed firearms, but discourage further consideration of the public sale provision. These weapons should not go back into the community, and we spoke to this point a few weeks back as well. In addition, related insufficiencies and background check processes add further complications to such a process being carried out in a safe manner, in our opinion. We recognize that the city of Falls Church can only go so far, as was mentioned earlier by the previous speakers, and understand the unfortunate limitations of Dillon's rule. And we look forward to continuing to work through our supporters to suggest further statewide measures to promote gun safety through our delegates in Richmond. Thank you again for your report on this important issue, and our local group looks forward to continuing to work with you between now and here and up to the public hearing later in January. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate you coming out tonight. And our last speaker, at least at the present, is Mr. Benton, welcome.
I just wanted to extend an invitation to you personally, to all of you, and everybody here, and everybody that might be paying attention over the media, that our annual, 29th Annual Falls Church News Press Holiday Party is this Thursday night, the 13th of December, at the usual location, the Center for Spiritual Enlightenment, 5:30 to 8:00 PM, you're all welcome. It's catered by Anthony's Restaurant, and we're going to have the jazz band from the high school in our, also. You're welcome to come on out.
Sounds great, it's one heck of a party, I think it's on most of our calendars, so thank you for the reminder. At this, the last speaker that we have, if anyone else would like, certainly welcome to do, but if not, we're going to move on to council requests. Any council, anyone would like to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a meeting of the year, I'd want to bring to the manager of the city, hope to work over, while we're at this, to ask that our last development committee found instruction management plan, I think, and staff, just email that, would be helpful. Second, who's, now, I've got, I've got a list here of the offending parties, and the Falls Church News Press is most certainly not one of those.
All right, that's good to hear.
There are, however, three that I took pictures of in early November, autoextra.com, automart.com, and petloverscompanion.com. The boxes that they have stationed across the city seem to be completely empty, and have been since early November, so we're going into at least 30 days plus. They are obviously not serving any First Amendment purpose that I can determine. I would ask if the city attorney could write a letter or issue some sort of notification to determine whether the parents of those publications, which you can track down some information on the web about, could be written and asked, are you still in the business of printing? Perhaps they're not even in the business of printing anymore, and they just haven't gotten around to taking the boxes away. They are an eyesore, and they've become trash receptacles, and at some level could become a security issue too. So, that's another item. Traffic counts on Route 7, and having a conversation with some folks at the Spectrum Condominium last week, and in many conversations about economic development here, traffic counts are an issue that the public is curious about. Right now, the material that we have on the website, you know, shows what we've got, 20,000 to 30,000 cars a day going up and down Route 7 in Washington. I thought I noticed a line run across Route 7, as if maybe more traffic counts are being taken now. At any rate, just as we make the turn into the new year, if we have new, updated information on traffic counts, I think it would help build confidence in the public that that is something that we're paying close attention to. The next item is the fabulous job that was done paving and striping South Maple Avenue. Really nice, looks great, took a while to get it done, but it was well worth the wait, I think. It does call attention to the fact that the untamed vegetation at South Maple and Wallace Streets is still untamed and has been now for several months. That's probably a private responsibility, but whoever's responsibility is, is not meeting it. Again, if, over the course of the next three or four weeks, we could address that, it's a part of town that we're, you know, have invested considerably in to upgrade the commercial offerings, and, you know, as I say, the street paving was done nicely, but it actually makes it difficult to park and exit your vehicle on Wallace Street because of the overgrowth in the curb area against where the parking spaces are. Another thing, there was a posting about the house on Great Falls, which, you know, fell victim to the fire some months ago. What is its status? It's sold, according to the posting, in September, and there's supposedly a new buyer who will be, you know, making construction plans, but the import of the posting was that, you know, it's an eyesore, possibly a safety hazard, and is there any responsibility the city has? We're not slowing anything down, or we just want to make sure that that site does not become any kind of a problem while construction goes on. That's an information request to give us an update on whether anything needs to be done on the city side there. Finally, I read an article, and this is a bit looking down the road a ways, but it does come upon us pretty quickly. Next year, we'll be a year away from the census, communities across the country are forming complete count committees. Goes without saying that here in the little city of Falls Church, every person needs to be counted in the census, so I would ask the vice mayor, who's chair of our Government Operations Committee, that we stand up a Falls Church Complete Count Committee so that we all stand up and are counted when the census is done, to make sure that we reflect our full and complete population, including those who may be living in somewhat more transient situations, which is not uncommon here. And finally, I don't think I'm going to break any big news here, but the change in the agenda tonight was to reflect the withdrawal of Planning Commissioner Lindy Hockenberry from consideration for another term. Lindy's asked to be not considered for reappointment. There'll be much more said and done about her service for the community, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and if you see Lindy over the next few weeks, certainly thank her for her service, and be assured we'll have appropriate recognitions of all of that in the new year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other council requests? Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, we received a request from our citizen to review fire department and fire service-related options, and I'm wondering from the city manager how he's going to respond to that, and what mechanism he's going to use with Arlington, with the volunteers, with staff, to reexamine fire service, to make sure that A, we're providing world-class service, and B, we're doing so at the most efficient way.
Thank you, Councilmember Snyder. We did receive the letter, I have shared it with the fire marshal and the chief of police, and we'll review it, and if we could just have a little bit of time to think through those recommendations and get back with, with the city council on that, and we can get back with Mr. Kirby as well.
All right, are there any other council requests? Okay, well, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council, just a few things to report. First, council heard from citizens asking for a missing link sidewalk construction on North Virginia. We do have a contract now to have that sidewalk put in, it will be done over the winter months, and we'll get back with the neighbors on a more precise schedule, but we anticipate by the end of January that sidewalk will be done, weather permitting. And so, I want to thank Mike Woodfield, our Public Works Director, for responding to that request, along with others, Jim Snyder, I think worked with one of the homeowners, and so we will provide additional updates, but that's the current schedule, by the end of January. I want the council to be aware that we are working on a new contract for solid waste services for the city, and there'll be more discussion of this in January, but I just want the council to be aware, it's been mentioned from the dais previously about this process, but we're in the final stages of that contract negotiation. I think we'll produce a good result and bring recommendations to the city council, as I mentioned, in January. I also just want to note that Chris McGow, who is our solid waste coordinator, has announced that he is taking a new position in Fairfax County. And so, he is taking his efforts to finish up these contract negotiations before he leaves, but he will be very much missed with the city. Chris has brought a lot of innovation, he was recognized by that by the Virginia Municipal League for our first-in-the-state curbside composting program. And we did a lot of work with Chris to try to look at ways that we could keep him here, but there's an opportunity with Fairfax County with a much broader portfolio that he found to be very attractive. And, and so, I wanted the council to be aware of that. Lastly, the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. We are doing a lot of work with the development team, we had a meeting with the campus coordinating committee, we've had a meeting with our joint infrastructure planning team, which includes school staff, the Gilbane and StanTech, Quill Evans team, and now with the full development team, and we'll continue those, the coordination on a lot of key design issues, and the first design issue that we're working through the pros and cons on to bring back to the campus coordinating committee, and ultimately to the school board, is the idea of the shared parking lot, which is in the, quote, "the trapezoid good neighbor area" between the 10-acre development site and the school site. So, more to come on that. But, in terms of a public announcement, this coming Sunday, December 16th, we'll have our ninth Sunday series meeting, and that will be at 2:00 in this room, again, Sunday, December 16th. And the focus of that Sunday series meeting will be a briefing by the EYA, PN Hoffman Regency Centers team, their, their designs, we'll give a briefing on the interim agreement and some of the key terms that are in that interim agreement, and we'll discuss the schedule. So, Ms. Aubrey is working to help us get that meeting set up, but everybody is welcome to that. We are really focusing our outreach on boards and commissions to make, to try to really have a really strong showing by our boards and commissions to get an advance viewing of the conceptual plan. We're also doing outreach to neighboring homeowners associations in Fairfax County to make sure they're aware of it, and invite them as well. And that's all I have to report tonight.
All right, any questions for Mr. Shields? Looks like we have two, Mr. Snyder, then, sorry.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, you mentioned a minute ago this parking lot, so as I understand this parking lot, that if it's built on the school property, then the cost of the real estate that we get from EYA goes up, is that right? But, who would pay for building a parking lot on the school site? Would that be the city and the schools?
No, that would be paid for by the development team.
Paid for by the development team?
Yes.
So, it really is an issue where we're getting more money, as opposed to we're only getting more money here because we're spending it over here?
That's, that's a good way to describe it. It is clearly a net increase in the payment, so what we're working through right now is the design issues, the traffic flow impacts, those types of things. And I, I think I can fairly relate that the school administration is favorably disposed towards this option, they think it will work functionally well for them, it's a question of working through the details. And this ultimately, I think, is a joint decision, the city council and the school board would want to make this decision together, because it has financial implications as well as design implications. And the campus coordinating committee is sort of chartered to work through the details to give recommendations, both the school board and the city council.
Let me go back to the financing of this one more time. So, if the parking facility with the additional, how many spaces is it?
Well, I don't know, I can't recite what the full count is, there are 189 spaces that would be dedicated solely for school use, and the garage is larger than that, so it would also have parking that would serve the commercial development.
And so, if that's placed on the school property, those additional spaces, you're saying that the development team will pay for that?
That is correct.
And that's no cost to us?
That's correct.
Where if the parking facility is on the commercial section, the development team would pay for it, but then it would be a cost to us of, what, five million or something like that?
The, the base terms of the $44.5 million land transaction.
And that's over how many years, by the way? That's not all upfront, right?
Yeah, that's a stream of payments that is, first payment in May of 2019, the second payment in 2021, and then a stream of four payments after that.
How long, how drawn out are those payments?
One per year, with the final payment for Phase 2 being when Phase 2 is, proceeds.
Is Phase 2 guaranteed?
There's a, there's a $10 million minimum guaranteed payment for Phase 2.
Thank you.
But just to note, those base land transaction numbers assume that there is not the shared parking agreement. If we do the shared parking agreement, then those base numbers increase by the 5.3 million that you referenced.
Development team is paying for those additional spaces, not the city and schools?
Correct, that's correct.
Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update on the North Virginian Park sidewalk, I am thrilled, as I'm sure the neighborhood will be, they've waited a long time for this, so I think it's terrific news that we're going to have something by the end of January. I think this is a situation where it's a, if you give a mouse a cookie, it's going to ask for a glass of milk, so I'd love to make sure we think about a process for how to address this in other places in the city. So, I know that, I've heard from Mr. Snyder that we may be in the process of cataloging other missing links in the city, but I'd love to have a mechanism so that we don't just continue hearing from citizens about missing sidewalks, and we can figure out whether there's a process that we start finishing the sidewalks that we know are missing, prioritizing them, figuring out a budget to address them, but I know that that's, you know, one of many in the city that, as we try to address walkability, that'll be really important.
And one thing I will just note, with these, we're viewing these as what we'd call spot improvements that don't need engineering. If it's an engine, if it's something that's going to need to be engineered, then it needs to really go through a, you know, a capital improvements plan. So, what this will be is a five-foot wide sidewalk, it will be immediately adjacent to the face of curb, because that's what, that's the right-of-way that we have. If we went into right-of-way acquisition, then that's a much more lengthy and time-consuming project, and at that point, it would need to get into queue with all of the other capital projects. So, we do not envision a big design review process either, we envision this as working with a contractor, essentially out in the field, to get these improvements installed in the future, if we need to redesign it in a more complex project. Now, we do have a major smart-scale project, which is a multi-year, long-term project to re-envision the entire Maple Avenue corridor as a great street, under the Great Streets Program. And. Maple Avenue corridor as a great street under the Great Streets Program. That's where those larger design issues can be considered. Here, we're trying to address a gap and a safety issue, and we'll do so expeditiously.
Great, and then just a follow-up request, if we could share the design with the neighborhood, that would be great. I know that they have concerns about trees potentially, as well as whether there will be a crosswalk, without creating kind of a false sense of security if we do add a crosswalk there. Thank you.
All right, any other requests? If not, let's move to business on the agenda, Madam Clerk, did you call the first item?
We have a second readings and ordinances and other items requiring public hearings. Our first one is TO 18-09, ordinance to amend Chapter 22 Housing, Section 22-82, Chapter 40 Taxation, Section 40-497, and Chapter 48 Zoning, Sections 4-2, 48-235, 48-393, 48-423, 48-453, 48-486, and 48-521, to update language referring to persons with disabilities and align the definition of group home with state code.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Shields.
Well, thank you. This item is now before the council for second reading. The purpose of it is, is to update language using current usage and definitions for persons with disabilities. There are no changes to the ordinance since it's been referred out to the Planning Commission and to all of our boards and commissions. There were some comments, those are related in the staff report, and responses to those comments are in the staff report as well.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public, is there any council comments, requests, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt TO 18-09.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, thank you, council.
All right, thank you very much, our next item?
We have TO 18-11, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, by rezoning a total of approximately 34.6527 acres of land from R1A Low Density Residential to B2 Central Business for the properties at 7124 Leesburg Pike, real property code numbers 51-221-001, 52-221-002, and 51-221-003, on application by the City of Falls Church and the School Board of the City of Falls Church.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Aubrey, welcome.
Good evening, council. On October 9th, the City Council granted first reading to this ordinance to amend the city's official zoning district map. And the subject site is currently developed with the George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Anderson Middle School. When the site was annexed into the city as part of the 2013 Boundary Adjustment Agreement with Fairfax County, it was zoned R1A Low Density Residential. In accordance with the provision in the zoning ordinance that requires property added to the city shall be zoned R1A until designated otherwise. So the intent of this ordinance is to provide a suitable zoning designation for the future of the land to reflect plans for the proposed new high school, signal the city's intention to facilitate and support mixed-use development, and to be consistent with recent land use actions, which included in January of this year, an amendment to Chapter Four, the Comprehensive Plan, to add text for special revitalization districts for education and economic development, and to amend the future land use plan map for the subject site to place designations of park and open space with two school symbols on approximately 24 acres and mixed use on approximately 10 acres, all within a special revitalization district. In August, the City Council adopted an ordinance amending the B2 district in the zoning ordinance, and this amended text allows elementary and secondary schools up to seven stories to be built by right within a special revitalization district, and it also added new special exception provisions for mixed-use economic development projects within that same district. This zoning map amendment would allow for the implementation of these new B2 zoning rules to the subject site. The ordinance was referred to the Planning Commission, Economic Development Authority, and School Board. The Planning Commission and Economic Development Authority have recommended approval of the ordinance. The School Board has had questions on the School Board input moving forward in the process. To summarize, they would be a reviewing board during the special exception process. And we, as Mr. Shields mentioned earlier, we have included the developer in campus coordinating and infrastructure meetings with the School Board and staff. And the full questions and answers from staff on the School Board questions are on page three of the staff report. In addition, state requirements for rezonings exceeding certain development thresholds require a traffic impact analysis that has been conducted and VDOT has completed their review. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment because it's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and future land use plan map, and will accommodate the anticipated special exceptions in site plans for the mixed-use project and additional height for the new high school site plan. And additional factors are trends of growth or change in the area and encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the city. So if there's any questions, I can take them now.
All right, are there any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Not a question, just a comment, I just wanted to commend you, Ms. Aubrey, I was looking through all the attachments, and so the last one had all the detailed communication we've had with the neighborhood jurisdictions and VDOT, so I appreciate that we've been working closely with them and had given them a chance to review and comment, so thank you for that.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Duncan?
Just so, it has come to my attention that some in the community are concerned about whether the economic development project will loom over the new high school that we're building. I gather that in lines 102 through 112-ish, if there are those who have concerns about that, the opportunity to really dig in to see what the impact the economic development project's going to be on the view shed of the high school would be February to May 2019, is that?
Right, correct. Right, we're anticipating the schedule is that it would be referred out to boards and commissions, the special exception entitlement, that is, in late February, and then so the March to early April window would be the timeframe for boards and commissions and public review.
Okay. For the Sunday's, Sunday session, are we yet at the point where we really can show very much of the shadow impact of the economic development as proposed on the new high school? I mean, we're not yet to the point where we've got shadow studies or anything like that, I assume.
No, it's a little early for that, but they do have kind of estimated heights of the buildings that will be adjacent to the schools, and those are the lower, mostly the lower-impact buildings. So, and they also, as part of our analysis, as you'll recall, the Comprehensive Plan goals that we added were for lower, more compatible heights at the school and higher heights towards Haycock.
So we have good language that tries to, you know, cover us on this, there's nothing, nothing that replaces visuals, shadow studies, you know, some kind of flyover models, I mean, it's, my interest here is in trying to move those sort of tools as early into the process as possible so that we don't find ourselves here in April or May as a council seeing for the first time the shadow studies of the economic development on the high school. We'd really prefer that boards and commissions and the public have early and maximum exposure to that, that's my, that's my little speech, thanks.
All right, are there any other questions? Vice Mayor Conley?
Thanks, Ms. Aubrey. One of the ongoing conversations related to this development is the eventual ownership of the parcels of land. And I just want to confirm that doing this has nothing to do with the ownership of the land.
Correct, I think we can, we'll have him stop me, but we can move forward with this process, but I think at the time of comprehensive agreement, that will need to be figured out because then we'll be conveying the land, so...
Right, but that's a comprehensive agreement, that doesn't preclude us from doing this, we don't need to wait till that's taken care of to do this.
Right.
This is a step in the process so that when we get to the comprehensive agreement, this is in place, and the ownership of the land will be determined.
Yeah, and we'll need to do a subdivision plot kind of concurrent with this, so that will be kind of the process also where that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Z?
I really just have a comment, which is that I want to thank our project manager, Ms. Carly Aubrey, for moving this along and becoming so familiar with us stepping up into the breach where yet another employee of the city has left, and we're lucky enough to have someone that has not only filled their shoes but have expanded them. And so with that, the questions, I would like to move adopt, move to adopt TO 18-11.
All right, do we have a second? All right, before we move to a vote, I'm going to ask if there's any public comment to this matter. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, thank you, council.
Thank you very much. All right, we call the next item.
Certainly, we have, now we're on to resolutions and first readings of ordinances. Our first item is TO 18-12, ordinance to amend Chapter 28 Weapons, Article 7 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, to regulate the transportation of loaded rifles and shotguns and repeal outdated provisions.
All right, Mr. Shields?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney, who helped draft this legislation, and to Chief Gavin, who is in the audience, who's also available to speak to it and answer any questions on this.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCroskey.
Yes, the changes to the city's weapons ordinance began in order to take advantage of additional authority that we have under state code to prohibit the transporting of loaded rifles and shotguns on streets and highways in the city. And so that provision has been added. There also are a number of outdated provisions that have been repealed. These provisions are being removed from the ordinance because they were years ago actually invalidated by state code, but we currently enforce against this type of conduct similar to what's in these provisions under state law. If you look at line 46 in the staff report, you'll see that a chart begins, and what it tells you is that for each ordinance provision that's been invalidated by state code, as noted in the far-right-hand column, it gives you the state code provisions that allow the city and the police department to enforce against similar conduct. And that is, in fact, how we've been, been working for some time now, so this is not going to change the practice. And we worked with the police department to make sure that that was clear, that even though there's a lot of language being taken out of our ordinance, this isn't going to change what the enforcement is today. Since our, since the work session, we made two changes based on that discussion. We, excuse me, we have removed the language about the public sale of weapons so that that is no longer in there, there's other mechanisms for disposing of weapons, and as the police chief told us last time, they never use a public sale of weapons, so we managed to take that out. We've also removed a section which had some general exemptions, and as it, after reviewing everything that had come out of the ordinance, it was apparent that we no longer needed that because the exemptions that we have are within the specific section, so we don't need that blanket exemption provisions. And so those are the changes that we made since the last time, but we recommend that you grant first reading to this ordinance, if there are any questions.
All right, Chief, welcome.
Again, council, I'd like to thank you and just bring up some points of interest about this ordinance. First, I wanted to reemphasize that we're wholeheartedly behind and support this ordinance change. And describe it as, you know, we, we are, any, any way the city is able to exercise the authority to, to control weapons is a good thing, it's a safe thing for the community, but certainly a safe thing for the officers. And just to let you know, how this ordinance may play out on the street for an officer, and how it may keep the community safe, if an officer was to stop a vehicle for a traffic violation or suspected of a crime, and they saw a long gun that was possessed in the vehicle, in the presence of a gun, the officer now has the ability to check that weapon, which is a nuance, but it's that, it's that needed step to ensure that the weapon is safe, and if it's loaded, why is it loaded, and where are they going? And those type of instances is where officers make those interventions that stop crime. And each time we pass an ordinance that allows the officer an extra step to ask questions or engage the public, they're going to find with the totality of the circumstances the ability to stop crime. So what this ordinance does is makes the officer safer on the street to be able to engage the person in possession of the weapon, and any, anytime they're on a scene or on a traffic stop where there is a weapon, there's, there's a presence of fear in the officer and probably occupant, because here we are, an officer has a weapon, the driver or the passenger has a weapon, and what this ordinance does is gives them the ability to get into the, to make it safe, to engage more questions as to why, why this weapon is loaded, where they're going, and in all actuality, it probably, in most cases, will either show that somebody is lawfully have as a weapon, or if they have ill intent, is going to stop a crime. And most of the time when we have weapons on the street in the last five years, like I said, we have seized 75 weapons in the City of Falls Church, and of those seized weapons, I believe it was 47 of them have been destroyed, and then 28 of them have been given back to the rightful owners. But in those cases where we do take weapons off the street and they're loaded, I would dare say oftentimes, and we seize them, they're from criminal acts, or people in possession of drugs, or the intent of committing a criminal act. So I applaud your efforts on this, I thank you for taking every effort you can to exercise the authority given to us in the state, which is somewhat few, but it certainly does secure the community, and we are 100% behind it, and I'm here for your questions.
Thank you very much, we appreciate, we appreciate your service to our community. Are there any questions for the Chief? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Chief. So just so I understand, if an officer pulls someone over, there's a long gun, it's loaded, is the default, you know, that the police take that gun, seize that gun until it's determined, you know, whether it's lawfully held or not?
Well, they would make a traffic stop based on a traffic infraction or some type, type of criminal act. If they saw a long gun, then they would probably separate the person from the vehicle, persons, if there's more than one, and then they would determine if the weapon was loaded and safe, and then they would inquire about, you know, whose weapon it is, why are they in possession of the weapon, are they legally in possession of the weapon, and if it meets any part of this ordinance. Not necessarily seize it at the time, but they'd have to find some type of criminal act or intent or something illegal that didn't fit this ordinance.
So the mere, the mere fact of it being loaded is not sufficient to seize it?
No, because there are exceptions in this, in this ordinance, which you would see if there was someone that was coming and going from work that, say they were law enforcement or military, or had some purpose to have a weapon such as that, the officer would have to engage the person and ensure that they weren't part of the exception. Now, if they were, yes, they could seize it at that point and keep it for safekeeping until such time a court, court case came around.
And it's a secondary matter, it's not, it's not as if you can pull somebody over just because you see a long gun on a rack in the back of their pickup truck.
Right, it's, it's a secondary.
Okay, and if in the course of such an action, other firearms, handguns, you know, become obvious or turn up, just sort of talk us through that, where does that go?
An officer makes a traffic stop, and oftentimes, when they're engaging the subject, they're looking for the totality of the circumstances, what they have before them, if there are any odors, there are any... if there are any odors, there are any, any, you know, is the license, is the car's licensed property license or the people property license? What is the fraction in which they were stopped? And after some conversation, depending on, you know, if they smell something or the person's acting a bit nervous, they may separate them from the vehicle and ask them to step away and have a conversation with them. Depending on the nature of, you know, it could unfold to somebody could be suspended, they can't be driving a vehicle. And in that case, we are responsible for the vehicle and all the content, so we would have to search it. And in the, in, in those cases, sometimes what we find, we'll find weapons, we'll find drugs, we'll find money, we can find a number of things. And if we find weapons, particularly with drugs, then we would seize them and then charge the person appropriately. The weapon goes into property section until such time it goes before court. Oftentimes, I'd say probably those weapons that were destroyed were weapons that were taken in type, some type of criminal event. And those weapons are mostly handguns. There have been some long guns, but mostly handguns. Now, if a person is driving down the street and we stop them and they're licensed and they have a weapon, oftentimes lawful owners of weapons, when we stop them, will put their hands up on the, the steering wheel, tell them, I'm in possession of a weapon. The officer, again, will separate, separate them from the vehicle, probably pat them down, ask them where the weapon is, ensure it's safe, hold on to the weapon until such time the traffic stop is over, ensure that they're a lawful owner of the weapon, give it back to them, and they're on their way.
Okay, I actually, I was going to give a next question, I'm glad you explained that process. So if you're a lawful owner, holder, that's, that's sort of the protocol that you need to be trained to, you know, observe to help keep everybody safe, police and yourself too.
And we're going to try and separate the person from either the vehicle and/or the weapon so that we can make it safe. And the whole scene is safe. And if the person refuses to, then we have to up the ante in terms of our officer safety and kind of put them in a position of disadvantage and get the weapon.
Are there other questions for the Chief? Mr. Snyder?
My Chief, thank you for your, your work generally on this. So a question, how is a rifle defined?
A rifle is defined as a long gun that's supported by your shoulder with two hands. That's how I've read, read it being defined.
Would it apply to semi-automatic pistols, for example?
No.
Oh, and how many rounds can they be fitted with now based upon the clips that are available on the market? Is it a hundred or what's the?
The long rifles, the pistols?
Semi-automatics.
Police have, I believe it's seventeen and usually I think in a magazine is around ten, ten to twelve.
Does this apply to weapons like Uzis and those kinds of things that have a relatively short barrel? What, what I'm getting at is while this is useful, it doesn't go as far as I think we would all like.
Right. And I'm sure my moms could probably tell me exactly what, they know more than I do. But yes, that, yeah, Uzi, when you see an Uzi on the street, and we have taken an Uzi off the street in Falls Church, it is, it's frightening. And in coordination with federal law enforcement, we have taken an Uzi off the street.
So why is this ordinance limited to rifles and shotguns? Is this all we're permitted to do under state law?
Yes, sir. I, I think it's born out of the cultural difference of Northern Virginia versus maybe Southern Virginia. A lot of people in Southern Virginia or Western Virginia, probably hunting season, carry their rifles. And I believe that in Northern Virginia, that's not so much, that's not a regular practice here.
So I guess the, the question I'm asking is you'd like to do more, but you're limited by state law?
Absolutely.
All right, anything else for the Chief? Vice Mayor Conley, of course.
Thanks, Chief Gavin. Earlier tonight, Ms. Morrison mentioned it would be great if we could also require that the weapons be locked. And that is another thing that we're limited by, can't do because of state law. Is that correct?
Correct, right. And all the police officers have long guns in their car that are locked?
All right, thank you very much. Maybe if you could be on standby in case any other questions come up. I'm going to open it up to public comment now. I know we have at least one speaker and maybe more. As I mentioned earlier in the day, if you're welcome to speak, but we'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. And our, my one and only speaker that I have at this point is Amy Hurstadt again. So, welcome back. Long time no see.
This wasn't the issue I was coming here for tonight, but then when I saw it, I had to speak to it. One, I have to say, I'm glad that the city council is addressing this issue. When I lived in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, which in some way feels a lot like Sou- Southern Virginia, and people do carry long guns in their cars, we actually had an incident where a veteran had a loaded gun, a long gun, in his truck. And his daughter was there and they were on a hunting trip and she got shot in the head. And he was trained, just like I am with guns, and knew exactly how to use it, and accidents happen. And so I'm glad to hear that you're going to address this because accidents do happen with long guns, especially when they're not locked up.
Thank you very much. Okay, unless we have any other speakers, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of this hearing and move it to counsel. Are there any counsel comments about or questions? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. Even though we don't have a lot of comments tonight, I think it's evident by this amazing turnout of moms and dads and others who demand action that clearly our community supports stronger gun control. So thank you all for turning out. Thank you all for shaping this ordinance and the Chief and the city attorney for working on this. I know this is hard because oftentimes our hands really are tied and clearly we need to do more. I think based on the discussion tonight, we clearly would love to do more in our ordinance, but this is a good opportunity to highlight how little that we can actually do. But I do think it makes sense to both strengthen the controls to the maximum extent as allowed by state code and to clean up our city code. It's always good to have it accurate and up to date. So I'd love to see us take this to first reading. I think I can speak for pretty much for all of council that we remain absolutely committed to more and stronger common sense gun controls. And again, we appreciate your turnout tonight and show of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what council member Hardy said about common sense regulation of the many weapons we have among us. And it's disappointing that Virginia has so few restrictions and just the very simple things that we could be doing seem to never take hold. We need to close the loophole on background checks. We need to have one hundred percent background checks in all venues. We need to ensure that anyone who has a prior history of domestic violence is restricted from owning these weapons. And lastly, we need to fund an interoperable database between all the states so that we know who has what and when. And I would hope that this legislature in the new purple state of Virginia will take some action this fall.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. Since being elected some years ago, my number one priority for running then and my number one priority for serving this community is its safety and security. And yet we see the state of Virginia and the Virginia laws are a number one obstacle to us doing the kind of job that we want to do in that area. So let me just review a couple of the reasons why we're here. Mercy Hospital shooting, eleven nineteen eighteen, three fatalities. Thousand Oaks Night Club, eleven seven eighteen, twelve fatalities. Tree of Life synagogue, Pittsburgh, eleven fatalities. Rite Aid warehouse shooting, nine twenty eighteen, three dead. TNT trucking shooting, Bakersfield, California, five dead. Fifth Third Center shooting, Cincinnati, Ohio, three dead. Capital Gazette shooting, Annapolis, Maryland, five dead. Santa Fe High School shooting, ten dead. Waffle House shooting, four dead. Yountville Veterans Home shooting, three dead. Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, seventeen dead. Pennsylvania Car War shooting, four dead. Rancho, Oklahoma shooting spree, five dead. Texas First Baptist Church massacre, twenty-six dead. Las Vegas, ten, one, seventeen, fifty-eight killed, five hundred injured. Seven, seven, sixteen, Dallas, five police officers killed. Six, twelve, sixteen, Orlando, forty-nine killed, fifty-three injured. Twelve, two, fifteen, San Bernardino, fourteen dead, seventeen wounded, and on and on and on. All too often, these shootings are directed not just at individuals, which is bad enough, but at civic and community institutions. And yet the state of Virginia is one of those states which is an outlier. Even the United States Supreme Court says that reasonable regulations are possible with regard to firearms. And yet the state of Virginia makes it virtually impossible to conduct that sort of reasonable regulation of the kind that council member Z said a minute ago. Unfortunately, the ordinance in front of us is necessary news, good in that sense, in that it provides us at least some sort of limited action. But mad, bad news because it well illustrates the severe limitations that localities are put under by the state of Virginia. In essence, the state of Virginia is prohibiting us from engaged in the very regulation that even you, this US Supreme Court said would be constitutionally permissible. So in addition to voting for this ordinance this evening, with some reluctance and regret, because there's much more that I want to do. I'm sure there's much more that you want to do, and we've just heard from the police, there's much more that she wants to do. Well, the time for symbolism is over, the time for limited action, we'll continue to do that, but the time for real action, in my view, is here. So I'm going to ask our representatives to the legislature to call for a full, direct, immediate repeal of fifteen point two dash nine one five. Now, let me read that to you. It reads, "No locality shall adopt or enforce any ordinance, resolution, or motion, and no agent of such locality shall take any administrative action in governing the purchase, possession, transfer, ownership, carrying, storage, or transporting of firearms, ammunition, or components, or combination thereof, other than those expressly authorized by statute." Then it goes on to say that any ordinance, resolution, or motion adopted prior to the effective date is, of course, nullified. And then in addition, to add salt to the wound of the inability to respond to the kinds of issues that I've mentioned, it, it authorizes attorney's fees, expenses, and court costs to any person, group, or entity that prevails in an action challenging an ordinance, resolution, or motion as being in conflict with this section, or an administrative action taken in bad faith as being in conflict with this section. Ladies and gentlemen, if there was ever an ordinance that needs to be repealed, it's that one that is consistently an obstacle to doing what we need to do to protect the safety and security of our citizens, which is after all why we constitute government in the first place. So I want to thank everybody involved. I want to thank council member Lady Hardy. I want to thank everybody here today who have refused to give up in the face of incredible odds and other members of city council and our law enforcement officers and especially our chief for the leadership that she's shown in this area. Believe me, there's a lot more I could do. In fact, I had an idea, an idea that would have said, maybe I have to admit that people can carry firearms on public property, not something I want to, but let's assume under Virginia law. Well, how about we just make someone carrying that firearm prove that they don't have a restraining ordinance, or prove that they don't have something else that disqualify them from carrying a weapon? And what the advice that came back from the city attorney is, nope, you can't do it under Virginia statute fifteen point two dash nine one five. You had one more reason why, I hope this is the beginning and not the end. And I want to thank you all gathered here today for showing the courage not to give in and help all of us move this limited step forward. But it needs to be just the beginning. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments to make? Vice Mayor Conley? I'm sorry.
I'll just agree with what everyone else said.
Okay, Ms. Hardy?
Can I draw everyone's attention to the pneumatic gun section of this? I know we talked about it last time, about kind of really stepping up the communication, but since work session to now, I actually found out about two incidents in Falls Church City where children have been hurt by stray babies. And so what I want to call out is that in section twenty-eight dash two oh two, we've actually banned the use of pneumatic guns in any public property. Is that correct, city attorney?
Yes.
And so I think, given that we've enacted this and that's the maximum that we can do on this area, right?
Correct.
It really feels like we need to up the communication around our communities, that people, that people know that it's only in private property where you can do this, and you have to have an adult supervision if you're a child.
That's correct.
Okay. So maybe a request for the city manager and the communications office and our police chief, because I think it's pretty scary to hear that while they may not be deadly, they are still hurting our children. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to grant first reading of T O eighteen dash twelve and schedule a second reading and public hearing for January twenty-eighth and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming out. All right, let's move on to the next item if we could.
Yes, we have TR eighteen dash fifty-four, resolution providing guidance on the development of FY twenty twenty city budget.
All right, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So now we're just returned to boring budgeting. Everyone's leaving. It's perfectly understandable.
They'll be back. They'll be back. Where are you going? This is exciting.
So a week ago, we had a FY twenty budget planning session. And in that meeting, we provided an update on the financial forecast for next year. And we have, just to set the stage for the budget guidance resolution, which is a draft that is put forward for the council's discussion and consideration that we believe reflects the comments at work session. We have just a condensed version, about six slides, which we'll just have, we'll go through them really quickly, just as, really for the public's benefit in terms of what the financial forecast, the revenue forecast is. And so Ms. Bawa, if you could go through those slides, and I think this will be very brief.
Yes.
And, and then we'll go into the discussion about planning for next year and the council's guidance for that.
Before, before you get to that, the vice mayor and I have a disclosure disclaimer we'd like to read. Would you like to go first or?
After consultation with the city attorney, I wish to state that as a school board employee and a participant in the city's pension plan, I am a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by the council's action on item ten B two, budget guidance, and on item ten B three, pension plan amendments. I am able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right, and I as well, after consultation with the city attorney, wish to state that my wife is a school board employee and participate, a participant in the city's pension plan. I am, I am a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by council's action on item ten B three, amendments to the pension plan, and item ten B two, budget guidance. However, I'm able to participate in these matters fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. All right. Unless you have a disclosure to read as well.
We'll find out after this. Good evening, Mayor Carter and members of the council. We have for you just a few slides, a quick summary of a full discussion on the budget forecast for next year, and the slides of which are on the website, the budget website, as well as the city clerk's website. So in fiscal year twenty twenty, we are projecting the real estate valuation of our real estate in the city to be at two point four percent growth for next year. The residential sector remains strong at two point seven five percent with a market growth of two percent and new construction of thirty-two million. And in commercial, due to lack of much activity, there is only one, one percent growth, primarily the market growth, the one percent in that. And looking at other economic factors in the region and the national economy and other jurisdictions, neighboring jurisdictions, we are projecting a total revenue growth of two percent for next year in fiscal year twenty twenty. of two percent for next year in fiscal year twenty twenty, and that amounts to roughly one point seven million of the total budget, of this year's budget, which was ninety-two point five million for fiscal year nineteen. With that, giving a quick comparison of the three-year, five-year, seven-year, and ten-year averages for various categories that you have seen in the past, the school transfer, the seed enrollment at the schools. By your demand and request, we added the population growth as well. These numbers are derived from the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Services and the twenty-ten census, so we don't have any more latest data, if you feel those numbers look a little, not as tuned in, especially the three-year with all the units that we've been adding in the city. So, general government growth, expenditure growth over the three, five, seven-year, and ten-year averages, and the revenue growth organic, which is net of any increases for operations or others. So, and a quick description of the budget, basic budget drivers that we are expecting for fiscal year twenty twenty. Health insurance and other benefits are, at this point, projected to go up roughly within the ten percent of our current year funding. We will get more concrete numbers for this by February of next year, and will be incorporated in the city manager's budget in March. Compensation for citywide every one percent increase is equal to roughly two hundred thousand. And the other big one is the WOMADA, the interjurisdictional contracts in general are going up, but WOMADA is expected, and we, these are also projected numbers that we have received from them. They will be presenting their budget to their board later on in the next coming month or two, and we'll have more substantial numbers included in the proposed budget in March for that as well. And some other categories listed here that we do not know the funding amounts for, the retirement, hopefully will be a net zero impact, but we still don't have a final number from our actuaries yet on that. And fire station six staffing, as Mr. Shields had mentioned at the last meeting, and other, the C S B funding contract with Fairfax that we have, is expected to see an increase. And any other mandates, legislative mandates, like the Medicare expansion bill, that's in the pipeline, but we do not know the full funding impact of that. There was a request to see an increase of the real estate over the years, along with the actuarial valuation growth in the city. So I have two versions of this, and you'll find this information interesting. The real estate tax rate has seen a growth of eight and a half cents from two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, and the actual median homeowner tax impact increase of roughly thirty-nine percent. So, and AV growth, which by far, the blue portion is the AV growth, and the red portion is the real estate tax rate increases in two thousand eleven and thirteen. Those red portions were to build the fund balance. The two thousand fifteen, eighteen, and nineteen red portions are all for capital projects, the C I P, the city's C I P. And if you switch to the next slide, this is, I think, the slide that you're more used to seeing. On the left, the red portion, you see the tax rate increase from a dollar twenty, it's on a scale of dollar twenty-four to, all the way up. So in two thousand eleven, it was one point two seven, and it rose to one three five five, which is a net eight and a half cent increase over the nine-year window. And the blue line is the median homeowner tax bill, real estate tax bill increase, which is roughly thirty-six, thirty-eight percent, as I mentioned, the bill, that total increase. And the two and a half cent increase that we saw last year, that's, the numbers are still the same. We will know more. We'll provide refined numbers once we have the January first, two thousand nineteen assessments billed to the citizens, I mean, the residents of Falls Church, and then we will provide the impact of that when we come to you with the proposed budget. Next, a quick summary of the C I P financing plan, which, as you may know, we issued the first tranche of bond issuance in May of this, this year for the city hall, library, and George Mason School of roughly twenty-one point three million. The second bond issuance is expected in May of two thousand nineteen, within this fiscal year. Roughly, a larger amount, roughly seventy million for the high school, library, and other miscellaneous general government C I P projects. New debt service started in fiscal year twenty twenty, and as you may recall from the chart we saw last year, the first year saw an increase, two thousand nineteen, of roughly two point six million, and this is growing to roughly six million, and growing even more to eight million. So the idea of building the capital reserve was so that we are able to smooth the impact of the increase to the residents, and we are able to draw the capital reserve down to pay the increased debt service over the years. And with the two and a half, two cent increase that was implemented in two thousand eighteen, and to give the whole, full of summary of it, two thousand eighteen, there was a one and a half cent increase for the C I P. Two thousand nineteen, we realized three cents savings in operating towards capital, that's five cents, and then we had two cents increase in the tax rate last year, and then one and a half cents, the return on investment on the pension funding that we have sitting in our pension fund. So altogether, eight cents was, was channeled towards this funding, along with the interim agreement that we have and the West Falls Church project, that were, the funding that's going to come, that would help pay for the debt service, portion of the debt service for that. We are not required to have a tax rate, tax rate increase in fiscal year twenty. And based on the plan that we saw, the full C I P model that we saw, we are not projecting to increase capital tax rate for capital purposes in the next few years as well. And that takes us to the budget calendar. I'll just highlight a couple of the dates. Today, we are hoping to receive guidance from you, and the city manager will bring back the proposed budget in March, prior to which the school does their budgeting, and superintendent's budget presentation is on January eighth to his board, followed by a board adoption on March, February nineteenth, followed by a couple of budget hearings and other meetings and deliberations on the budget, and we're expecting a adopted budget in April twenty-second. That's the schedule. With that, I'll wrap up and open up for questions.
All right. Are there any questions? Sure. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Ms. Bawa, last week's work session, there was an extensive presentation from the schools on the school budget drivers as well. So, I kind of wish that there had been some school budget drivers in your presentation, just so that they were all there in the same presentation.
Sure, we can put that up.
That would be good.
Okay.
I know, we all know what they are, but if others are watching tonight and didn't see last week. So, as the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I just have to tell you that, just to say out loud how profoundly disappointed I am that we aren't able to say tonight we've come to a wonderful revenue sharing agreement after twelve months of discussion, and it will all be perfect and simple, because it's never perfect and simple. There are still a lot of different drivers in this budget, and we have never been able, despite many different models and ways of looking at it, we were not able to come to a revenue sharing agreement, even though, with the best of intentions of everyone here, as well as staff. So, one of my frustrations with this budget guidance statement is that several of these items contradict one another, and it's difficult to say, we want to present a budget, budget that provides a level of employment compensation that is competitive within the regional labor market, and yet restrain ourselves to just two percent growth. It's difficult to say that we want to review all city government and school programs to achieve the most cost-effective delivery of services, while at the same time expanding our C I P. So there's a lot that is in, it doesn't fit together. So it seems like we have a lot of ideas that we all think are really good ideas, but they don't all knit together exactly as we wish they would. So I feel like this document overt sometimes is used as a, this is the line in the sand, and this is how things are going to be, and don't dare cross that line. And I just feel like we need to make sure that it is flexible and that this is a starting point, as we have said in the past, lines one thirteen through one sixteen, where we're asking that the general fund operating budget, inclusive of both general government and school operations, should not exceed organic revenue growth currently projected at two percent over the budget. The problem with that statement is we'll never know what organic revenue growth is until we're done the whole budget and it's next, a year from now. So, it's really hard to figure that out, and in the end, we're going to end up with the same conversation over a penny or two on the tax rate, do we need to increase it or not increase it? So, it's great to have a budget guidance document, but I feel like it's not going to, the high hopes that this was going to end any conflict that we would have in February, March, April, and May, this is not going to do that. So, I wish we could vaccinate ourselves against that, but I don't think we can.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think partly because I wasn't there, this was a fairly decent document to begin work on. I do appreciate everything the vice mayor has said. I do think this, that while our budget process is, is sometimes complicated and sometimes controversial, the reality is that we've got one of the best school systems in the country, and probably the best in the state of Virginia, so whatever it is we've been doing with our budget guidance over the years has been the right decision. And I will, I personally will continue to fund the schools at the level that they need to make quality, irrespective of guidance, and hopefully it can fit within guidance. I also think starting in a relatively constrained manner is a good way to begin, as things come on, we know we'll be flexible, we've ultimately voted to be flexible in the past. So, I appreciate the concerns with the lack of some sort of revenue sharing agreement, but the reality is that we'd probably end up in the same place anyway. And then, I think if we start in a relatively constrained manner, and then build from there as we see necessary, I think that's a reasonably good approach. I do have a question about the last bullet on, or the last point, rather, on lines one twenty-nine to one thirty-four. I would ask the city manager, I am going to assume a maintenance of effort for transportation expenditures. Is that assumed here, or do we need to amend this? In other words, if we want to do more, then we can do more and decide to vote additional resources, but I don't want a situation where we're not funding core transportation things out of our current budget in the future any differently than we're doing now. So let me ask the city manager, do you understand one twenty-nine to one thirty, I guess thirty-three, one thirty-three, to imply maintenance of effort, and then additional sort of improvements and additional funding would be options over and above that?
The, I would interpret this to be a maintenance of effort in the context, when it's put in the context of the two percent. There was a request from the DAAS to get to the issue of, of the pace of projects, and so that's why this is phrased as options. I don't think those options, under the two percent guidance, will be possible to be built into the core budget, but there would be options for the council to consider strategically if you wanted to put more resources towards those.
Will the core budget continue to include infrastructure improvements, including transportation improvements and traffic calming at at least the current level?
It will. What's built on the tax rate today is two hundred thousand dollars for traffic calming, and so that would be continued on. I would read this paragraph to say, to sustain that. The, there is, I think, a reasonable discussion, though, for the council. The council's made it very clear that that is a priority. It's, it's part of the compact with neighborhoods for neighborhood preservation at the same time that there is development in the commercial districts. But if that comes at the expense of not taking care of basic transportation needs, like taking care of air traffic signals, or maintaining an adequate budget for basic paving throughout the, the city, the core transportation information, infrastructure that you see there, then that will need to be flagged as a trade-off in the budget. And that's the way I would interpret that.
So you're assuming the budget at the two percent level would carry at least the amount that we're spending now on traffic?
I think so. I will say, this is early days, and we need to go through the budget, and I will say that with the priorities that the council has, with the priority, priorities to maintaining a competitive compensation system for employees in a, in an, in an environment where there is upward pressure on compensation just because of competition, as well as the need to recruit and retain high-quality employees, that's going to be a big pressure point for this year's budget.
Okay. So I like the first part of your answer, that yes, it is. It is maintaining current levels of effort. It's not like we're moving transportation off-budget, and then if we want any traffic calming, we'll have to come up with an additional tax rate to do that. But I'm, I'm hearing you not saying that.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that right now, and, but as we're, as we get deeper into the numbers, some of the things that can go bad for us, first, I'll just say with the WOMADA number, that four hundred thousand dollars is a surprise to us. What we had anticipated this time last year was that this year was going to be, WOMADA was not going to be an issue in FY twenty budget, because that was the promise, that WOMADA would be capped at three percent growth. Three percent growth would be, for us, about seventy to eighty thousand dollars increase in WOMADA, not four hundred thousand dollars. Well, when we read the fine print of what was negotiated, apparently between the General Assembly and WOMADA, there are significant carve-outs to that three percent cap. And so, we're presented with a WOMADA budget that has an eleven point five percent increase in their operating budget, not a three percent increase in their operating budget. Hence, we're talking about potentially the equivalent of an additional penny on the tax rate for WOMADA, in a year in which we weren't anticipating that. So, signals have gotten crossed somewhere along in the process here.
So, what I'm hearing is, you would like in this three percent cap, and I've actually said it in public meetings, three percent means three percent. Well, apparently, in some views, it doesn't. So, if we pass this tonight, you're authorizing me to take a very hard stance on that, and I don't mind doing that at all. I mean, I don't, there's no reason why WOMADA ought to break our budget. So, if that's what I'm hearing, council wants me to do, believe me, I'd want to do it.
We, we need your help, and we need all of the council's help on this issue. Because that's, that is exactly what's happening. If this year's budget is a four hundred thousand dollar WOMADA number, under this constraint of staying within organic revenue growth, that will have serious impacts on education and general government services. There's no question about it.
Right. It impacts, no question. So I don't have any problem at all taking that message region-wide, if that's the message that people want me to take.
So, just for reference, the three percent operating has a lot of exclusions to it, and the collective bargaining unit agreement that came up is an exclusion to that three percent. They did a four-year contract with their unions, for which they settled an amount for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and that impact to us, that we are required to give the impact to Falls Church is about a hundred twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand, for, which is required to be paid in nineteen, we may carry over to twenty, and that's how, because we haven't budgeted for that. That was done much after the budget was adapted.
So some of these numbers are new to me. I've not heard them before, so.
Right.
Yeah, they were, they're new to us as well. We got them the week prior to the presentation last week, so.
Believe me, I'm very pleased to take our, our point regionally, and if the council wants me to do that, no hesitation. But I will say, that is four hundred thousand dollars out of a, what, what's our budget?
Well, we're talking about a total growth of one point seven million.
What's our total budget?
Ninety million.
Right. Ninety million.
Right.
So the four hundred thousand is important, believe me, every dollar's important, but, but WOMADA even up at four hundred thousand, it is a significant issue, but it, it's, there are a lot of other moving parts that affect the budget even more. Right.
That's true. There are many parts to it, but this is one that was not anticipated. There are many parts to it, but this is one that was not anticipated.
Forward to taking it regionally.
So another question, I guess, on another wild card. Do we have any sense of the scale of the...or the magnitude of the CSB to fund Medicaid?
We do not, not yet.
Do we know, like, is it like another $400,000? Because now we're talking like pennies on the tax rate, right?
That one's very hard for the people at the CSB to deal with, because their budgets were cut directly by the state. They know that. The question is, will the Medicaid vouchers, which are supposed to follow now the patients who are seeking services, make up for it? The state says yes. The locals say, we're not seeing it. The facts are going to have to play that out. But I think that's an evolving issue. But I think the staff at the CSB are concerned about it, and that's true statewide as well.
I guess besides Mr. Snyder doing the good work on transportation, what else can we do to help? Is this like a Richmond issue, and I think Delegate Simon has left already, but is this something that we think the General Assembly can help address with us, or do we just have to wait till money falls from the sky?
We will...Cindy, do you know the answer to that question?
The General Assembly budget item that, once it plays out, if the budget's not made whole because the state made some assumptions on how the Medicaid waiver federal funds were going to backstop, then I think it needs to be raised to the General Assembly and the Governor for the budget.
Okay, so something we can address, I guess, when we go down to lobby.
Before we go on other comments, I'm just going to ask the public, is there any member of the public who wants to...or wishes to speak to this matter? All right, seen none, the hearing is closed. The public, are there any other comments from council members? Mr. Duncan?
The slides that you showed, you said those are posted online?
Yes.
Have you got paper versions of those?
I do have paper versions. Do you want?
Okay, so we can get our...
I've put them out.
And they'll be available...not right now, but they're...all this is available online?
Yes.
Because the...some of the additions to the charts were good and different from what we saw last week. Okay. Well, I don't have a whole lot. I just want to thank the Vice Mayor for her efforts to try to promote harmony on the Budget and Finance Committee between schools and the city. It's always a challenge, because we all want the best for the kids and the schools and the teachers and the city and the general population. It's...it doesn't come cheap. Our expectations of excellence across the board are not inexpensive. Every budget seems unique and it's, you know, surprises, challenges. This one seems especially unique because of the uncertain economic environment that we are in and, of course, the extraordinary effort that we're making on capital projects, most especially the high school. It has been encouraging to me, as somebody who has not sat on the Budget and Finance Committee or on the Steering Committee that meets monthly on Fridays, that the schools and the city have worked in good harmony, I think, on the Westphal church economic development project and the high school project. And at least so far, we seem to have a product that everybody seems pretty satisfied with. I know we've got other hurdles to clear, but that's started out well, and credit to all of you who have been involved in that. I hope that, you know, can continue here through the next few months as we work on the operating budget and we can maintain that sense of common purpose and harmony that we've, I think, achieved on the capital project, on the operating budget. So with that, I'm supportive of the language in the document we're presented with tonight.
All right, is there any other comment? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think with these kind of two new wild cards we just talked about tonight between the CSB and WAMADA, and I think knowing that we're going to be quadrupling kind of our new debt service, and we talked about kind of enrollment and all the different needs we're going to have, I think I have a hard time just personally justifying a tax rate increase this year. This feels like a year, if any, to live without a means, so I think this is a really good starting point for us. I do want to thank the Vice Mayor and Mr. Lickenhouse for working on revenue sharing. Hopefully, we can keep trying, because it would be nice to kind of have a more simplified budget process. I do want to be a little more provocative, though, on traffic calming. So I know Mr. Shields pointed out that we will, hopefully in this budget, fund NTC at the current levels, about $200,000, but, you know, we'll have to look at options on how to do more than that and what the trade-offs might be, whether it has to be traded off against paving or other kind of maintaining our current infrastructure. I think, to me, traffic calming is a non-negotiable, and we're talking about the safety of our pedestrians and our kids who are trying to get to school. So I'd like for us to think about it as just as important as maintaining our roads and not just a, well, it's a nice thing to do later on. Because as we try to actually encourage more people to walk around our city, I think we have an obligation to make it safe for them. So I think I'd like to actually think about it as a more important priority in past years beyond the $200,000, whether that's just getting more throughput or more funding, and not make it kind of an afterthought. So, thank you.
Ms. Mary Connolly?
Thanks, Ms. Bawa, for pulling up the school slide. Will you add that to the presentation so it's available online?
We'll add their full presentation from last time.
Okay.
It's already on the website, but we'll...from December 3rd.
Just add it to this one as well. Thank you. Last week I asked, and you weren't...this was not a thing that everyone loved, but I think it would be very helpful to have a schedule of when things will fall into place, just between now and Mr. Shields' presentation on March 11th. When will we know the CSB numbers? Just even if we can get early December, late December, early January, because there's so much that's out there that we're waiting to fall into place. When will we get those health insurance numbers?
February.
Okay, can you put that on a piece of paper?
I sure can, but what my explanation last time was, to you, it's all only going to come in March. I will have it in February, maybe CSB sooner or later, but health in February.
But we're not going to stop talking about it until March. We're not going to just not pay attention to it until March. So it's out there, and people are wondering. So as things get tightened up, it would just be nice to have a schedule of when this is all going to happen. So that when people ask us, when is the CSB going to come, just so we have an idea and are able to answer those questions. Thank you.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. And then the $400,000 metro, that's our extra penny on the tax rate. I mean, that is what is going to be our stumbling block this year, I feel like. So we just have to decide as we go through this process, is it really going to be $400,000, or is that another one that'll get tightened down to two like it did last year? And then how are we going to deal with that? Will we take that out of our salary improvements? Will we take that out of our traffic calming, or will that be a separate additional thing? So I think that's something that we're all going to have to grapple with as we go forward. And then my last question is just about the operational tax increases. Last year, we raised taxes...can somebody remind me? One and a half cents?
Two and a half cents.
Two and a half cents.
Two for capital, half cent for WAMADA.
So none for operational?
No. Last year, we used a whole percent towards...of operations, towards capital, so that was equivalent to 3 cents.
Exactly. So we constrained ourselves pretty well last year.
In operation.
In operational. And so the tax increase last year was simply for capital and for WAMADA. On that chart that you showed, that shows things three, five, 10, seven years, how much have we raised for operational over those years?
Point it out.
Because it seems to always be...it's very small.
The one before that one.
It just adds up.
Five, slight five.
This is the last one that was for operations, and that was in 2013.
And it was three...so it was three and a half cents in 2013?
That's right. And so this is when Mount Daniel was...those bonds were issued, and then these two are all for the CIP.
So our operational growth since 2013 has really been all within the organic...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
While you've got that slide up, so the top blue line, then, is the actual cost of the tax bill from left-to-right years up. So the average house was 6,600 and now is 80...I'm sorry.
91, 72.
And that was what, a percentage increase of what, 30-some percent?
38, 39, I thought I heard you say.
That's correct.
From 2011 to 2019. Just would be curious to know, has the average sale price of a home gone up that same percentage in those years?
I don't think it has, because some of that was tax increases.
Right, I think probably...we probably could get to those numbers, but probably about 28% of that is from AV and the last that is from rate increases.
If we were...if we were trying to live within, you know, the increased value of the fine community that we're building, we would have increased spending by about 28%. Instead, we've chosen to live in even more fine community, which has required us to increase the tax rate on top of that 28%. Okay, I'm just looking for ways to explain to people who ask, you know, why is it that I'm paying so much more in taxes? Because we have a fine community and we're making it really fine.
Are there any other comments, or should we move to a vote?
Mr. Lickenhouse provided some comments that he wanted...
All right.
Would you like me to do that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Fellow council members, as you know, I am traveling out of the country on business and unable to attend or call in for tonight's council meeting. I'm disappointed that I could not be there in person. Accordingly, I felt compelled and think it is my duty to offer my thoughts related to budget guidance to you and the community at large, and to reiterate on the record my recommendations. Per staff presentations, it is my understanding that the budgeted revenues for FY 2020 will be approximately 2%. Accordingly, I would ask both the city and schools to produce budgets that do not exceed the revenue target. Over the last six months, as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, along with Vice Mayor Connolly, we worked diligently with both the schools and city and witnessed firsthand the significant effort they put into developing a roadmap for a modified revenue sharing agreement, an agreement that could lead to a budget without public spectacles and allay much of the consternation created through our typical process. Unfortunately and disappointing to many of us, we were unable to reach a formal agreement that everyone felt comfortable with in time to coincide with tonight's proceedings. However, I remain hopeful that, given the time and collaboration put into the work to date, we can still reach some version of a revenue sharing agreement that works for everyone prior to a final budget being passed next year. Absent of that and until such time, I would ask that the city and schools, at the very least, operate within the spirit of the draft framework while staying within a 2% budget guidance. If revenue growth estimates change over the coming months, then we should be prepared to address those changes, positive or negative, as it relates to each respective budget. Finally, I want to reiterate that I believe our city's fiscal health is strong. However, I also believe that the larger economy is already showing signs of weakness, which as with any downturn, will inevitably put pressures on city revenues in the future. Equally important, economic downturns affect our citizens and businesses as well, and we have a duty to them to protect their bottom line by mitigating tax increases whenever and wherever possible. We have committed tremendous sums of money to capital projects over the last few years, more so than at any point in the city's history. These commitments benefit everyone, cities, schools, community, and citizens alike. And so in the past, we asked our community for a commitment to pay more taxes to deliver those projects, and they did. We have now successfully navigated several major economic and commercial development approvals that should alleviate a future need to raise taxes to pay for those capital projects. And it is my belief that barring any unforeseen capital improvement needs on the immediate horizon, contemplating a tax rate increase at this time for anything on the operating front is unwarranted. We have a duty to take care of the people that serve our city and schools while operating the city commensurate with all of our community's expectations, and I believe we can and should do that within the revenues we expect to collect.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other comments that folks have tonight? If not, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 18-54.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you please call the next item?
Yes, we have TR 18-55, Resolution to amend the city's basic and police pension plans effective January 1, 2018, to revise Section 6.05 direct rollovers and Section 7.02 and 8.01 employer contributions.
Mr. Shields?
Our HR Director, Ms. Mester, will give you a brief report on this.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we have two amendments that we would request council consider and approve for both the basic and police pension plans. These have been reviewed with the retirement board, and they have endorsed bringing these two items before council. They also considered two additional ones, which they have deferred at their last meeting in November, which will undertake additional research for next year. The goal had been to bring all of these together at one time, so although the retirement board approved the two that you see before you in March, we waited while we did the additional review. We have them before you now so that council can act at your last meeting of this calendar year, which is how the pension plans are administered. And under the IRS regulations, they must be adopted by the end of the calendar year in which we want them effective. So that would be this meeting, so they'd be effective for the full calendar year of 2018. These amendments are clarifications for the administration of the program and one benefit to beneficiaries. The first one you see outlined on line 30, this is to clarify that the water sale proceeds that the council placed into the pension plan trust are calculated for the employer contributions of the basic plan, not the criminal justice academy. And if we ever stood up the Economic Development Authority, which in the past had its own staff, they're inactive now because they're general government staff, that the water sale proceeds wouldn't be towards their employer contribution. So that's a clarification of the intent from 2014. Item number two, which is line 39, is to clarify how employee contributions for non-invested employees are handled. Non-invested employees are those that haven't been part of the pension plan for five years or more. And so in the changes for this, it will clarify that if they're not vested at the time in which they leave employment or participation in the plan, they will have a distribution. Under IRS codes, we cannot force a distribution under...with certain categories. So if it's under $1,000, they can have a lump sum. Before the plan said, everybody got a lump sum. IRS, you can only do it up to $1,000. After that, we must roll it over to an IRA up to $5,000. And so this plan clarifies that to be compliant with IRS codes. Additionally, we are clarifying that when an employee remains employed in the city, school, or general government, sheriff, or police, but are not vested, but they're stayed under the city employer umbrella, they don't have to take a disbursement, they don't have to leave the pension plan. Then if they...as long as they're in a defined benefit plan. This is really important, because on the schools, you have full-time employees that are under the VRS, Virginia Retirement System. They might become part-times and either come to the general government or stay in the school, but they change plans. In the past, they had to take out their employee contribution and lose their service credits. The same with sheriffs who are under VRS, but might be a police...become the police or vice versa. So we see this as a good way, while they're still under the city employer umbrella, to retain good employees, but because of the needs of the community or the employee change functions. So it's a good retention benefit, but that also reduces the liability in the long run. We keep good employees, so we don't have to recruit, but if they're not invested and they're no longer employed, then their contributions are dispersed to them. So those are the plans that are...two amendments that are before council tonight. As I mentioned, these have been reviewed and endorsed by the retirement board. They were also reviewed by your city attorney and our outside pension counsel.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that report and your good work in HR. Mr. Duncan, do you have a question? Oh, you seem like that you might be having one. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Z? No? All right. Oh, yes, of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
I just have one comment. I just want to say thank you for cleaning this up, because...
because that goes back to our budget guidance about creating a situation that is, keeps our employees here and is beneficial to our employees. And I think that's really important because until you're in that situation or until you know someone in that situation, you don't realize that how many people switch retirement plans, either as school employees who are part-time and become full-time or between the city and the schools. So I do appreciate that you're looking out for those employees.
All right, I'm going to open it up to questions. We'll go to Mr. Snyder just a second. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter's closed to the public. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. What's the fiscal impact to the city?
There's no local tax dollar impact for these changes before you. And for the pension...
Thank you, you could stop there.
All right.
It's good for the pension plan, too.
All right, any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt TR 18-55.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Council motion carries six to zero.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. I know we have a change, maybe it's already reflective, it looks like it is in the amended agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, Mr. Shields, is there anything? I guess this is just all appointments, right? So there's not a whole lot to be said here?
There are appointments, and then there's two substantive items.
Okay.
And I'll just touch on those very quickly. First is the endorsement by the Council of the 2025 application for RSTP Transportation Program Funds, which would designate those for pedestrian and bike improvements and the out years. This is in keeping with what the city has been designating these funds for, for the past probably five years. The second item is the appointments, Council appointments to the COG boards. And COG has asked for those by the first of the year. Those are the two items on consent and then the slate of appointments.
All right, do we have either any comments or a motion to, I guess, potentially?
Mayor, I'd like to, before moving the consent agenda, just to say that today earlier, we learned that Plan Commissioner Lyndy Hockenberry has chosen to withdraw from her submission for reappointment due to various reasons. But we do thank her for her service. She has served diligently on the Plan Commission since 2008. And we're going to give her her Just reward, which was three more years of that. So we will miss her. She will, of course, continue to serve if she chooses until that position is filled. And so we will advertise for a Plan Commissioner, and it will be in the news press and other media for a finite period of months. And we urge anyone who wants to apply that they should consider that and to do so. But it's important that you attend the meeting. And the next one is on December 17th in this very room. December 17th in this very room. We have a very engaged citizenry, and this is one of the more important commissions that we have. And it's, is one that you should know just demands a lot of time. There's a lot of reading, you have to know a lot of stuff. Let's even recommend that you go to school for a total of four weeks, two two-week segments in near Richmond. There's homework, but nonetheless, it's a lot of fun.
That's on our school, you know?
Get to pull all nine years again.
Yeah, I would also, I know there'll be plenty of time later, but I certainly would like to thank Lyndy Hockenberry for her fine work in the community and her many accomplishments in the city. And I imagine there'll be time to do that at a later point. But anyway, all right, so do we have a motion on the table?
I'd like to move all the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Whatever his name is, yes.
I thought Ross was here. Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero, thank you.
All right, looks like we've got a little bit of other business, and we do have a closed session at the end of this meeting. So we do have a little ways to go still. Mr. Shields, would you like to give us some updates?
We have two reports for Council under Other Business, and that's an update for the Council on your two-year work plan and then an update on capital projects. And so I'll take the first one, and then Cindy will take the second. For both of these, these reports are really for you, and I don't want to sort of drone on. You know, I think this should be a conversation really directed by the City Council. And, and not that I would ever drone on.
I know what he's thinking, but he won't say it. He's too smart to say it. It doesn't stop us, though, does it?
I would just note that in the Council work plan, there are five sort of big areas of priority. And those include the areas of vibrancy and place-making, particularly in our commercial districts and along our commercial quarters. The second big area of work is in economic development, both in the area of marketing and growing our commercial tax base. Affordable housing is the third big area of focus. Resilience and sustainability, the fourth big area. Core government services, the fifth area. And then in the Council work plan, you do note the major capital investments, which we'll give you a more detailed briefing on with the CIP report. So starting, sort of organizing the discussion just along those five, some highlights in that list. The Bike Share project, the long-awaited Bike Share project, that contract has been executed. The stations are being fabricated right now, and the bikes are being, the orders have been issued. And so we will have a spring, they will be on the street in this spring. And we are 100% confident in that.
Not to drone on, but do we know where they are? People are asking.
Can we refresh people on where the 14 locations are?
Sure, that, we can kind of resurrect that those maps are on the webpage, but we can highlight them.
How often post little signs like Bike Share Coming Soon Right Here?
The, I'm a little worried that people will say, hey, move it over there, and we, there's zero capacity to have that discussion, I'll just tell you. So with that caveat, we will get the word out and look forward to that improvement to the city. The other one that I would note in this, the Downtown Plaza. We provided an update, I think, two weeks ago with some of the graphics of what that design is shaping up to be. And we're going to do a lot of the work in-house or with local businesses and really trying to take a much more local approach on this. And so thank you to Kim Callahan, our project manager on that, and Jim Snyder and Akita Ruzy, who are really driving that design process now. Those are two highlights in vibrancy and place-making. Let me see if there are any questions.
Just on the Downtown Plaza. Last week, you talked about possibly naming the Downtown Plaza? And you were going to forward the naming policy? Or send us to the naming policy?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, the naming is done by the City Council with a recommendation from the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board. And generally, the policy is to, well, I won't go into more of it.
That's fine, but I'd like to take that up in January.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would just note, and not to poison the well, but there certainly, there was a very nice memorial for Mr. Brown over this past weekend. I'll just leave it at that, but anyway.
So on the wayfinding, I know that it looks like parking is mentioned in there, it's probably somewhere else as well. Can I make a request that at our next EDC meeting, staff provide a recommendation to us on what to do with the $90,000 in growing TOT money? Whether it's the parking recommendations, the parking task forces made to Council, some of this wayfinding signage work. But I feel like we've got a pot of money, which is a good set of resources we should be using to address some of this.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And so Becky Witzman is our staff point person for that. And I think the EDC and the EDA would be sort of the first stop for looking for allocations on that. But we do need a process where decisions can be made on that. And so we will, we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay.
Okay. The, jumping to economic development, some of the key things that were on the Council work plan included the West Falls Church redevelopment, the Founder's Row project, and the Broad and Washington projects. All of those have been basically hitting their milestones. I don't have an update on the Broad and Washington project in terms of insight developments, plans. We are in touch with them generally about every other week or so, but we don't have a date for a site plan submission there. The, the West End Small Area Plan, which would encompass not just the campus, but the broader area, that's an effort that we plan to kick off in the spring. Before you've adopted the final comprehensive agreement, to just sort of put, begin that process of looking at the holder, the bigger region as well, then that West End Area Plan wouldn't be adopted for, and you know, till after the approvals for the campus project. But hopefully, by bringing it up, the campus will be viewed in that larger context. Any other questions on this area of focus?
A question on the senior tax relief. So I know we had briefly talked about it last week at the mayor's meeting, but given that we're not going to convene the task force until next year, and we need the full calendar year to implement, we won't be able to effect changes on the tax relief policy? Is that correct, until 2019?
Yeah, the task force is meeting now, but the recommendations will be built into the next year's budget, but they would then take, take effect next June, not next December.
Okay, so what happens to the money that we set aside? Is that just go into the kind of extra money to give out for tax relief? Does it go back to the general fund?
That's a policy decision that the Council can make. It is allocated for tax relief right now. So if it's used for any other purpose, that'd be something the Council would, would direct.
Okay, is it, I guess, kind of one-time money? Because, I guess unless we sustained it, then it wouldn't?
It is built into the tax rate, so it's sustained.
Okay, thank you. Maybe the task force can make a recommendation to us.
The tax, the task force has met twice, and there's a meeting tomorrow. And Tina Erman is the citizen on the task force panel, and she has provided unbelievable amounts of information. It has been a really interesting and thoughtful panel. So there will be some good recommendations coming out of that. And, and there has been, well, there's been a lot going on, but unfortunately, we are not going to get it done in this calendar year. But the goal is to have it done by, I believe, early January.
Just two things on economic development, growing out of our EDC meeting last week. One, on the West End Small Area Plan. So all three planning opportunity areas west of the W O N D includes the federal properties. Does it include the West End Plaza, which is not technically west of the trail? It's just a little east of it, or south of it, I guess.
Yeah, I think that was covered in the earlier update.
The reason I ask is, you know, an opportunity to engage in any dialogue with Federal Realty and the Woodmont on those two properties was a point of discussion at our meeting of the EDC. And so the planning opportunity area discussion would include federal and the buyers, I guess. But West End Plaza sort of gets, if we're going to pay any attention to that, that's not going to be part of the planning opportunity area dialogue. Bike bridge.
Yeah, no, I understood. That, that Plaza was part of the Broad Street Area Plan. So that was touched a year ago when that, when that plan was adopted.
Okay, so if we're going to have any conversations with the folks there about, you know, we discussed the abundance of vacancies there and at Federal Realty at our meeting. Okay, and the other point we talked about relates to Lincoln End Cap, you know, the big, the big space at Lincoln. The backdrop here is, you know, we're doing all this new stuff, and people reasonably ask, why are we doing so much new stuff when we can't fill up what we've got? So trying to understand if there's anything we can do, if there's anything unusual about the vacancies that are in existing buildings. Basically, the discussion that we had Thursday, Friday, came away with no, you know, what's happening here is pretty typical of what's happening in a lot of other places. But still, we, we still want to do something because that's the way we are. And the Lincoln Building in particular was identified as, you know, an empty that, it would be nice to try to understand what, if anything, we can do to try to fill it up because it's a high-profile building on a side of town that needs more to happen in order for the things that we've already got there to succeed, especially the target. So that doesn't show up on your economic development chart here, especially I'm bringing it up for that reason.
Yeah, that's true. And it's, you know, it's understood that this was the work plan that came out of your retreat. So it's, it's evolving, but it is, it's intended as a, as a way for the Council to check in from time to time on your priorities. So as those change, you know, we can encompass that.
It's, you know, just, I mean, as you said, Broad and Washington, it is what it is. I mean, that was on our priority list, and there it is. And, you know, we'd love for it to happen next week, and probably it won't. So that creates an opportunity for us to maybe put something else on that list that might become a focus for our attention next year.
Mr. Snyder?
Just a quick question. Is there any coordinated look on HQ2 and how the city can?
The, in terms of a coordinated look, not specifically, you know, we are in touch with all of our partners, with Arlington County and Alexandria and Fairfax County. The, in the transportation realm, I think there could be some opportunities. And then, of course, in the education realm.
I think beyond transportation, too, you know, in terms of freestanding historic communities, obviously, the closest to HQ2 is Alexandria. But if you look at us, we're a real city with real history. Not that Arlington doesn't have its own, but I mean, in terms of when one would talk about a town or crossroads, village, city, whatever term you want to apply. So I'm thinking there may be some, some work to make sure that when they're talking about that sort of an environment, the screen.
Yep, places with character. Both.
We'll leave it singular.
I'm sorry, I should have frowned his row. Obviously, it needs to be updated on this chart here, right? Because demolition's started, so whatever, whatever words you've got need to reflect. We're doing good. We got, you know, two big projects approved, one underway. Creates an opportunity for us to talk about, as I said, a couple of other things. So that everything we talk about is not just, you know, the West End project, vital and important and all-consuming as it is, it is not the only thing in town.
And that's absolutely true. From a staff perspective as well, managing those projects is, is a work of many hands. And there will be complaints, but there also will be a lot of planning and a lot of transportation impacts, infrastructure impacts, a lot of interaction with that project as it goes through. So thanks for highlighting that. On housing affordability, I would note that the affordable housing policy is due to come back to Council. They actually wanted to come back to Council at your December meeting, but we had the budget planning session with the school board, so it is now scheduled for your first meeting in January. So we'll hear that report with policy updates as recommended by that working group. Senior tax relief has already been mentioned. Miller House is well under construction.
When is that set to be done? It looks great.
I'll, I'll get back with the latest schedule, I'll get back with the latest schedule, but it was always expected to be about a year-long construction project.
And any update on the people who will live there?
I think we're going to have news soon.
Okay.
So I got news late last week, but it needed to be reconfirmed whether Foster's family was going to actually accept the voucher that, or the waiver, so we'll...
Okay. Thank you.
More on that to come. In the area of resilience and sustainability, kind of the big area of work is the planning work of updating the city's comprehensive plan on environmental sustainability, and that's where a lot of strategies and objectives will be enshrined. The other, other areas of, of work have been the CPACE ordinance that we intend to, we're doing our due diligence on right now and looking at, at the Arlington model, but also the Fredericksburg model. Fredericksburg actually is financing their, their new baseball stadium, 20% with CPACE money. That's actually the most successful implementation of it in the state, and so we're taking a good, close look at that. Mr. Stevens, I think, also went down to Fredericksburg to, to meet with them on a statewide conference. That'll be coming to council, I think, very soon.
And that one actually is, I think we talked about it at the Friday CCC meeting, where it actually has good implications for the economic development project because it could help UIA with some financing, right? So I know you've got a lot on your plate, Carol, but it seems like it could be one, timing-wise, where we might want to make sure it's earlier in the schedules. Thank you.
In core government services, just the neighborhood traffic calming, the project, the current active projects, there's a long queue. We discussed that at a meeting with the CACT just a few weeks ago, but the Winter Hill Project at Gundry and Annandale is, is next up, and a traffic calming project at Little Falls and Great Falls. Missing links, I mentioned that earlier in tonight's meeting. That's the current project, but there is a more comprehensive look citywide that will be factoring into the CIP. The Innovation Task Force, we've had some conversations with a citizen who can help us with this, but I think we've got more work to do on that task force than getting it stood up. The Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, I think, is doing some work in this area of looking at emerging trends in the transportation realm in particular. I know Councilmember Snyder has had a big role in getting that regional effort going. Efficiency, general consolidations with general government and schools. We have been meeting with Dr. Noonan and Kristin Michaels, Cindy Mester and I have, and Cindy Mester has been working up, following up with school administration in a number of areas that are listed here in this report. Joint health insurance, employees assistance program, insurance contract renewals, our software, our financial software. We're doing joint training on those modules. It's a pretty revolutionary change in our, in our financial software that we're doing together right now. Areas of ongoing work is more coordination in the IT infrastructure area and in the facility and green space maintenance areas. We've tried to triage it a little bit, just to identify the areas where we think we can be most successful in working together and then build on that success. Any questions on, in that area? All right. And that's, I think those are the, the budget process improvements that was discussed earlier, and we've got more work to do on that, but I think a good college try has been made over the summer months. So with that, then, any other questions on the council work plan? CIP, and I think maybe similarly, we'll just try to hit some of the highlights. It's, it's a, it's a long list of CIP projects.
Yeah, and certainly, we've actually covered a lot either in this meeting or recently. So starting first with the memo, I do want to highlight that there are 30 projects on the snapshot, and over half of them are on schedule. We do have 10 that are yellow-coded, and that right now is because of either funding gaps or just staff resources with the vacancies we've already addressed. I do want to note that we have the link here for the CIP grant schedule, which council has already seen in work session, but that's an easy location for you to re-access that information. And on line 36 to 43, we outlined as a reminder just what those applications were that we have on the to-do list to submit. We also included the link to the neighborhood traffic calming update that you received, so it'd be an easy way to access that detailed material again. New to this CIP report is some trends that we're seeing in project management that we wanted to call your attention to, some of which Mr. Shields has already addressed in the budget discussions in terms of project complexity and staff resources, and that's something we'll be looking at very closely as we develop the next year's CIP for the six-year planning window adoption and then the full 10-year look ahead. That will go to the Planning Commission in February. We're also seeing some changes in more expectation at state level to use federal money. We've talked about how that impacts the complexities of procurement and right-of-way, and also the grant applications, the process is more competitive. So we're taking all of that into consideration as we look to developing the new CIP for your consideration, but also on managing the current project. So the snapshot is in the same format that you've seen before with the green, yellow, reds, and blue for completed, so it's great to have three completed ones, and we've talked a lot about the ones already on this list. I'll highlight just a couple. The Howard E. Herman Stream Valley, we'll be having those amenities and signs completed by May with work starting in January, so that's exciting. The Larry Graves Synthetic Turf Project is due to be completed in some, summer of next year, so that's still being a partnership with Fairfax County. Under Stormwater, which is the second page of the snapshot, there's three stormwater projects that are important for stormwater management and flooding. Two of those, Harrison Branch and Dorchester Great Falls, should be done by the end of this calendar year, and Ren's Branch, summer of next. So that's some three major projects, progress for stormwater. Firearms Training Center is due to be completed this upcoming January, and that is an important one for our police officer training, and we've included the YouTube link to the progress of that construction project, if you'd like to review that. There are two red noted projects on the snapshot for this time. This is the first time in our CIP updates that we've had two projects noted as red, so I wanted to call your attention to that. This is on the third page under transportation. The Oak Street Bridge is there because we didn't, we were not awarded the grant application the last go-round, so we'll be applying again for state of good repair funding. This bridge is critical because it's restricted in its weight until we get it redone, so it's an important next project. And the North Washington and Columbia Traffic Signal is also red. That's just prioritizing it with the staff resources right now. We're also with a preliminary cost estimate coming in from engineering. It looks like we're likely to have a funding gap, so we'll be looking at grant resources. With that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions, and our goal now is to get this back on a quarterly schedule because the last time we did a formal update was, so, six months back to quarterly.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a question or two. Letty, Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. There's a lot of traffic signals on there. The one I was going to ask about was the Temple one that, after the one that got blown over from the windstorm, the one on Hillwood and Andale. What's the status of that?
That one was actually not in the plan until the storm, and so that's progressing through insurance payments and other resources so that we can correct that. It does fit into the overall South Washington, Annandale, Hillwood, larger project. These were signals that we had already targeted for improvements.
Got it. Is there a timeline? I guess we're getting that replaced, or is it really just subject to insurance timelines?
No, we've gotten the insurance payments in the last quarter. I'll have to check with Mr. Whitfield on the design piece because it has a new PM. I'll make a note to follow up on that.
All right, other questions?
All right, I have one more.
All right, keep going.
Signal timing. So I know this was a project that was probably completed, but I know we had worked on signal timing along Broad Street. I've heard from several citizens about an issue actually on Southwest, so not being actually, coming out of Ellison, not actually be able to turn left because of traffic kind of blocking so far down Southwest and Mr. Duncan into your neighborhood. I wonder if that's something that can be addressed with signal timing, or really just, we just need planes, or there needs, it's just traffic-y, but I, I got a request today, so I thought I'd ask about that. I don't know enough about engineering signals and intersections, though.
I mean, you know, that problem occurred when we put the crosswalk in, which pinched the two lanes down to one, so during rush hour, all the traffic queues up back to my driveway and, you know, Wyatt Street, and it doesn't, the problem doesn't last long, but it is, you know, it's, it's a rush hour problem. The only thing you might do is put a, don't block the intersection sign up so that traffic, you know, stops short of Ellison and does not crowd the intersection, but that would be a pretty simple...
I guess Mr. Shields' takeaway is that's the problem. I don't know how we address it, whether it's signal timing, don't block the box, whatever.
Mr. Duncan's driveway.
It's a don't block, I'm used to it. I mean, I don't, of all the things that you have issues, I'm still, you know, yelling at people who blow through the stop signs. Rush hour is actually good because the traffic is slowed down and get out of the driveway. I mean, it's true, it's a lot easier during rush hour than during other times, but that's the problem.
Yeah, with, I think, the signal timing work, I think we've increased the amount of time that pedestrians have to cross streets, so I actually also got positive feedback that people appreciate having 15 or 20 seconds now to cross as opposed to the shorter time. So that was a good change that's been implemented at various intersections. I know we have LPIs leading pedestrian intervals at various stops, so I don't know, we've talked about in the past, and I think I've been in touch with Paul Stoddard about it, but I don't know whether it's part of all this signal work, or whether that's maintenance, whether we can work on implementing LPIs as part of other intersections where we have a lot more pedestrians.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Oh, sorry.
How about the Van Buren Street Bridge? There was a report being done on that, on the final delivery of that.
Yeah, that's not a CIP item either. Mr. Whitstrom was managing that, and that was one of his handoffs, and I'll check on the status of that.
Okay. It's here on the...
Oh, it is listed.
It is. Bridge complete, ready for closeout, final acceptance letter pending approval.
Okay.
That was specific to the CIP project.
Right.
The report I think you're referring to is from the flooding.
Right.
So it, it's the same area project, but a slightly different follow-up.
Okay. But you'll have that for us, or someone's going to pick that up and keep moving with it?
That's right.
Okay. And then on the South Washington Street Transit Plaza and streetscape improvements.
In the year 25, 24?
So it's awesome that the right-of-way acquisition is complete. I know that took a really long time. Where are we? Time-wise?
We're still probably a full two years out by the time we do the full intersection redo, all the streetscape. We're in the final designs and the procurement VDOT approval process for the bulk of it. Once we get VDOTs okay, then the RFP, IFB will go out, which will also include the text for the historic panels that are part of the Transit Plaza.
What's IFB?
Invitation for bid, a procurement tool.
Okay. And the funding that we have for that is still in place? Hasn't disappeared?
We have applied for another round of smart scale funding, which would be awarded this upcoming June for July for $2 million because of the increased costs for the undergrounding that wasn't expected in some of our right-of-way. So to fully complete it out, we'll need the additional smart scale. It's looking favorably so far in this review and hopefully recommendation.
So then you have paving, repaving is complete here? So there were some really nice crosswalks, the brick crosswalks that now have paving through the middle of them? Are they going to be repaired? Or is that how they're going to be? They'll be restored back to nice brick crosswalks? Okay.
The goal was to get the road...
Right.
But yes, it will eventually be back to brick.
Thank you. In two years? Within two years, or?
No, the... Yeah, the...
Two years.
Those, those brick pavers there at, at Lincoln, the contractors doing the sidewalk on North Virginia has got to finish those crosswalks first, and then we'll shift to the crosswalks up on North Virginia.
So we... It's part of a different project, not this project.
Same contractor's, all I'm saying. And so the point being is those sidewalk, those crosswalks will be repaired soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
That project, I know, got started back before scooters were a thing, and may go on long enough that buses aren't even a thing when it's finished, but is there, and I can't remember the design, is it, does it accommodate space for, like, people to drop their scooter and catch the bus to go down to Metro or whatever?
Yeah, the Transit Plaza will have seating area and open space rain garden kind of gathering place area, but it also has a two-bus shelter stop on the...
Scooter parking it does not have.
As bike racks.
But there...
Not scooters.
Scooters just go everywhere, so that's the plan for those.
That's the problem, I guess. And where are the Broad Street Ped Crossing Hawk Signals? Where, where are those to be?
Terry, Fairfax, and Lee.
And I know that the Vice Mayor has written with eloquence and passion about one of those crossings on Broad Street not being up to standard in front of the Kensington or in front of Panera. Did that ever get solved, to your satisfaction?
That's Lee. No, no, that hasn't been solved at all.
Okay.
That would hopefully be part of this project. It's one of the three intersections.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committee liaison reports? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I'm just curious, is anyone attending the COG annual meeting on Wednesday?
Probably.
Are you going, Mr. Snyder? Are you going? Is any staff attending?
I'm, I'm planning to go.
Okay.
All right, what else do we have?
I was going to mention that Housing Commission's meeting tomorrow, and I think there was an invitation that maybe went to everyone on council, but Wesley Housing is going to be there, so we had invited them to come to talk to us about the status of the fields, which I know has come up in previous discussions on council. So you're all welcome to join the Housing Commission tomorrow night at 6:30.
All right. Anything else?
Will we have a mayor's meeting on Wednesday?
I don't know. We talked about kind of doing an abbreviated schedule since we don't have council meetings, and I don't, I don't know if we made a formal decision. I mean, I think the idea maybe would be that we'd meet some over the holidays, but not every week. Does that sound good to you? Do you want to maybe take a week off and then regroup?
Or maybe we meet this week and then skip the next two?
Okay. That's fine.
That's fine.
The city employees holiday lunch is Friday. Is that right?
That is correct. Everybody's invited.
All right, that sounds good. Unless there's anything else, why don't we go on to our closed session then, which hopefully will be brief? I'm going to go ahead and read a motion here, if I could, upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
And seconded by council member...
Duncan.
And passed by vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, the fellow's property. Councilperson Duncan?
Yes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, councilperson Connolly?
Yes.
All right. Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House's absent. Snyder?
Yeah.
Zee?
Yes.
Tartar? Yes. All right. Let's take a brief break and let the cameras come down, and we will go from there. All right, we are coming back from closed session. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by council member... Seconded by Councilmember... Okay, we'll stay in closed session.
Zee.
All right. And passed by vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy? Lipton House's absent. Snyder?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
Tarter, yes. Okay, it is 10:23. I'm going to read a certification. Upon a motion made by Councilmember...
Connolly.
Connolly, all right. And seconded by Councilmember...
Zee.
And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lipton House's absent. Snyder?
Yes.
Zee?
Yes.
Tarter, yes. Okay, so we have a motion, I suspect, that someone will make here shortly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
My move that city council authorize the city attorney and the city manager to pursue acquisition of the fellow's property formerly known as 604 South Oak Street at the price disclosed in closed session as a resolution of the city's petition for condemnation.
Duncan?
Yes, that's a good motion.
Okay. We have a, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
And so that motion was for the amount disclosed in...
Closed session.
So before we take a vote, I just want to ask the city attorney, it's your recommendation that we go forward?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
All right. No? I will ask if any member of the public wishes to speak, except there are no members of the public, so... All right.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you. Council motion carries 6 to 0.
All right. Is there anything else to be said tonight? Excuse me. Is there anything else that anyone wants to say before we adjourn?
May I move that we adjourn?
That sounds like a plan. Everyone have a great holiday. We'll see you next year. All right, we are adjourned.